I'd like to welcome everyone here to our regular meeting, January 2nd County Commissioner Meeting. Would thank you for your attendance and anyone that might be watching this on YouTube. We appreciate your interest and invite you to come in person in the very near future. At this particular time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Eifert. And Commissioner Eifert, if you would have our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would bow with me, please. Our great family, Father, we again, Lord, thank you for this day and Lord, just thank you for the privilege that we can be here and, Lord, conduct the business of Stanley County. Lord, I pray as we end of the year 2023. Lord, I have a positive outlook for 2024 and I just pray, Lord, that you'll just be with us in all the decisions that we make. Lord, I pray for our country. Lord, I pray for our county. I pray for our state leaders as they'll just do the business, Lord, to your will. Lord, I pray for, again, for this board and our decisions. Lord, I pray for all our county staff. I pray for our police, our fire, EMS, Lord, that protect and service daily. And, Lord, during this world, the way it is now, I especially pray for our military and their families for the ultimate sacrifices they make. These things we ask in your precious name that we pray. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. At this time, I would ask that our commissioners look over the agenda. If there's any changes or things that you would like to change, please let me know. If not, I would seek approval for the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Commissioner King made the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hatley made a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. At this time, public comments is listed first. Ms. Ingo, I know you signed up for public comments, but I believe you're probably here to talk about the zoning request that you have. So if that's the reason you want to speak, let's wait till we get to that particular part of this agenda. Is that okay? Let's see. Gina, you signed up also, but that'll wait. Okay. Paul Wilkins, if you would, Mr. Wilkins, please come forward. Tell us who you are, where you live, and give us your comments, but please hold them to three minutes.
I will do my best. Paul Wilkins, 46481 Campground Road, New London. And I'm the Director of Gateway of Hope Addiction Recovery Center. And I just wanted, first of all, just thank every commissioner here for your support for Gateway of Hope. It is appreciated and has great impact every day. I know three minutes isn't very long, so I did. I just wanted to share a little bit about the progress and some of the things and some of the, I guess, victories, if you can call it that, at Gateway of Hope. And I didn't, I thought the best way we could do that was for me to share some of the comments from a man that came through our program. He graduated in October, and this is what he wrote in August. He wrote, "My name is Tim Warren Collison, and this is my story of freedom." And he titled this "Freedom Forever." "I've been delivered from a life of shackles and chains to a life of hopelessness and despair. I destroyed myself and everything around me daily. Nobody could trust me. Nobody wanted to be around me, and all people could see was the potential in me that was being wasted. I had no goals, no dreams, and no hope. I lived day to day trying to escape the hell that I lived in. Inside my own mind, I couldn't see past the despair, emptiness, anxiety, depression, and fear that suffocated me all the time. I battled against addiction for 19 years and was locked inside a prison in my head. At 11 years old, I began consuming pornography every day. It sucked the life out of me. My brain became warped. My view of the world distorted. It drained every bit of drive and motivation out of me. It brought on anxiety, depression, lack of interest in life, twisted urges and desires. My life became a living hell. I started looking for ways to escape. I turned to drugs and alcohol at 14 years old and would consume them on the weekends with my friends. My whole life became looking forward to the weekends so I could get high and drunk to escape the mental anguish I experienced all week. At 18, I joined the Army, thinking that the adventure and brotherhood would give me a sense of belonging and fulfillment. I did a tour in Afghanistan, which pushed me to a breaking point in my mind, and when I came back home, the breaking point launched me into a vortex of drug use and sexual addiction. I was removed from the military on drug charges, and this ushered in a full-blown addiction where I had to be high or drunk literally every minute of the day. If I wasn't actively using, all my time and energy was focused on ways and means of getting more. I had zero hope of ever living a good life. My only vision of happiness was enough drugs to stay high all the time. My drug use went from marijuana, alcohol, pills, psychedelics, disassociates, DMX, PCP, ecstasy. From these drugs eventually got too weak, these drugs eventually got too weak, which led me into meth and heroin and others. I became a garbage can user to where I would do anything that was put in front of me and if it made me feel different than my usual state of numbness and agony. From 23 to 30 years of age, I was either in a rehab, in jail, in a hospital, a psych ward, mental institution, or on the streets homeless for seven years, seven years, that's during the seven years span. I went through 16 rehabs, multiple arrests, felony charges, jail time, hospital stays for drug-induced injuries or psychosis. I was homeless in five cities, three different states."
Mr. Wilkins, I'm going to give you another minute.
Thank you.
Please wrap it up.
That would be enough, thank you. 10 minutes ago, I had been homeless in Charlotte for three months. I got into an accident whereby he was hit by a car, was laying in the grass on the side of the road with a fractured shoulder, bruised ribs, and a torn ligament in my knee. I was unable to move, and I just laid there thinking about my life, and I could not even imagine any of any kind of freedom. The drugs weren't working. I was negative in my bank account, and my family would have nothing to do with me, and my girlfriend was heartbroken. I haven't even seen my six-month-old daughter. I had nothing. I was rock bottom. I would grapple with suicide and thought everyone would be better off if I was dead. I was taken to the hospital for my injuries and alcohol withdrawals, and from there, I was taken to a recovery program. I did 28 days, and then I came to Gateway of Hope. I'm now nine and a half months clean and sober from drugs and alcohol. Christ is my King. He transformed my life. I have a relationship with Him, and I seek Him every day. He forgave me for the destruction and the hurt that I caused. He washed away the guilt of my past actions. He removed the sting of all relationships that I had broken. In all the theft, destruction of property, break-ins, lies, manipulation, sexual deviancy, drug use, all of it has been forgiven. He has made it a faint memory that no longer torments me. He is restoring my mind from all damage I did with drugs and harmful behaviors. He has healed all my injuries, freed me from the pain in my body. He's given me a job to work, which is the longest job I have ever held in seven years. He's provided for when depths have come up and has settled every single one. He got me off of probation for the first time in years. He wiped away my record. He has surrounded me with amazing people and influences that build me up and guide me. People trust me now. People aren't nervous around me anymore. People trust me with the keys to their houses, their vehicles. People trust me with money. My relationship with my parents has been restored.
I might have to ask you to close it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
There wasn't a lot left. Well, maybe a little bit. I just want to thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
I'd like to recognize, I believe it's Bryson Potte. Would tell us your name, where you live, and your comments.
Bryson Potte. Currently live in New London. So I'm just going to, I'll kind of start and give a little bit of backstory. I'm not going to talk too much about the darkness and the living hell that I lived in. Everybody can pretty much picture what that looks like. But I had a pretty normal childhood growing up. Grew up going to church, played sports my whole life.
Bryson, you have three minutes.
Three minutes? Okay. Normal childhood, grew up playing sports. For a long time, that's what I found my identity and my purpose in was sports and things like that. Going into high school, I just got burnt out on it, like everything else that's worldly is temporary. You get burnt out on it. So then I drifted into smoking pot and drinking on the weekends, and that would give me my fix. That would fill that void inside temporarily. And then it quickly went from on the weekends to every day of the week. Quit going to school like I was supposed to. And then from every day of the week, it went from pot and alcohol to pills, cocaine, crack, heroin, you name it, I done it. I done anything I could get my hands on. Ruined every relationship in my family. Just my life was a complete chaos. Let's see. I tried from age 14, I'm 23 now, from age 14 up until 21 years old is when I went to my first rehab facility, and I went to a sober living. And it was all AA, NA, people on maintenance, suboxone, subbutex. And there again, that's that worldly, temporary fix. For me, when I was in NA and AA, 13 meetings a week, on top of a full-time job for seven months straight, I got burnt out on it, just like all those other temporary things I was feeling that void in my life with, excuse me.
You have one minute to wrap it up.
Okay, well, since I came to Gateway of Hope, well, let me rewind a little bit. I was in the hospital dying. January 19th, 2023, I was in the hospital dead. I was on the way home from the drug man's house, and I died driving down the road. Coincidentally, ironically, I wrecked off in the hospital parking lot. If I wouldn't have wrecked right there, then I wouldn't be here today. But long story short, I ended up at Gateway of Hope. And at Gateway of Hope, I found a new way. I found freedom in Christ. NA and AA, all the other ways that I had tried it, it kept me in bondage with that addiction. It kept that reminder. It kept getting thrown up in my face, "You're always an addict," when that's not the truth. I'm a new creation through Jesus Christ, and He has set me free from all that. I'm no longer in bondage with that addiction. Since I've been at Gateway of Hope, DUIs, thrown out of court, dismissed. I have my own business. It's going great. I haven't won a day without work. The whole 10 months I've been here, I never thought that any of those things were obtainable. And now that I've got all these short-term goals accomplished through the strength that Jesus Christ has gave me, now I'm looking more towards long-term goals, and now I actually see them obtainable and in reach. All this stuff seemed impossible to me 10, 11 months ago. Seemed impossible. I would never have it. Now I'm looking towards buying a home and doing these things. All my relationships and my family repaired and restored like I had never broken any of them.
Sounds like you're on the road to recovery, and I'm thankful for that.
Absolutely.
I'm going to have to ask you to, in your comments, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the next person that signed up, I have a hard time to read, but it's the deal with Tom Road. It looks like rich, and I'm not sure, I can't read it. Tell us who you are.
Richard Honeycutt.
Okay, Richard, come on up. Tell us where you live and give us your story for three minutes or less.
Mine will be kind of short, and the little mobile home park down on Tom Road. Tim Warrens went down there, and we was working on the park along, and when he went down there, he told those folks that they could stay in there until January 31st, and we can't get this park, we couldn't work on this park with people in that park, in the homes. And he told them they could stay until then, so what we need is more time other than January 31st to get all these parts, all these places fixed up. They're just simple little old mobile homes, but they do fulfill people's needs, and there's a lot of folks out there that need them. And if they stayed in there for three or four months, they couldn't be all that bad. So that's why I'm here. I just need a little more time.
We're not here to grant anything. We're here to listen.
Okay.
And that's your privilege to speak to the commission.
Okay. And also, by what I'm telling, being told, there's a sewer line coming through there. And if, I don't know that that's why they want to do this to this park or put it down. I don't know, but I have a good idea that the sewer line has got something to do with I just know that I'm going to have to have more time than this to get eight of those places fixed. That's what I need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlotte Behringer signed up. Zoning issue, does this have to do with?
Martha Ingo.
Well, okay. Do you mind waiting till we bring that up? Okay. Louis?
Same thing.
Okay. Good deal. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the commission that have not signed up? Don't see any, so.
He's got his hand up.
Are you related to?
Yeah, is it related to Ms. Ingo? You'll have time to speak, even though you hadn't signed this paper. Okay, the next item is being presented by Dwayne Wingo, our utility director. Dwayne, come on up and give us the good news.
Thank you, commissioners. Stanley County Utilities has faced some operational setbacks at the West Stanley wastewater treatment facility and McCoy Creek pump station due to equipment failures. Originally slated for replacement during the West Stanley 2.5 million gallon per day expansion project, recent events have raised concerns the electromechanical equipment may not last until the project completion. To address these concerns, Stanley County Utility is proposing a budget amendments for the prompt replacement of the affected equipment. The first critical item is the Motor Control Center, MCC, at the McCoy Creek pump station. On October 25th, 2023, a complete MCC failure occurred stemming from an electrical arc in the main panel breaker in the MCC panel. This arc rendered the sewer pumps inoperable, leading to a significant sanitary sewer overflow. Despite Gopher Utilities' patch repair, their professional assessment was that the 1992-installed MCC deteriorated due to poor ventilation and hydrogen sulfide gases and would likely not last until the scheduled completion of the West Stanley plant, which is scheduled for September of 2026. Two replacement quotes were obtained for the MCC replacement. Bradshaw Incorporated quoted $138,375.50. Square D quoted $146,250.50. And Allen Bradley was asked to provide a quote but declined. There was also a budgetary quote added to improve the ventilation system via heating and air unit from the heating and cooling shop, which was also included in the budget amendment. We will be getting additional quotes for the heating air from local vendors since the heating and cooling shop apparently is in China Grove. The second urgent replacement pertains to the vertical turbine pump at the West Stanley wastewater treatment facility, which has failed a second time due to washout events caused by heavy rains, which lead to inflow and infiltration. These events result in solids within the plant reaching the effluent wet well causing motor failure in the vertical turbine pump. This pump is crucial to provide high volume of non-potable water to maintain proper equipment functionality. Without it, there will be a decreased, or there'll be a substantial decrease in process equipment performance, potentially causing permit discharge violations. An analysis by multiple engineers and equipment suppliers indicated that the vertical turbine pump is prone to fail again before the completion of the upgraded wastewater treatment plant facility, and it presents a overall poor application under the current operating conditions. Repairing the pump is also costly, approximately $26,000, and removal just to make the repairs creates an additional cost of several thousand dollars for the crane to get it up out of the wet well. Staff explored an alternative approach recommended by the equipment suppliers and engineers involving a heavy-duty irrigation well pump with a PVC sleeve and a compacted gravel jacket to prevent the solids from entering in the pump volute. Gopher Utilities provided a quote of $32,659.38 for a complete installation of this pump with variable frequency drive controls. This solution hardens the facility process from future and likely high-flow events and costly repairs. Staff proposes adding these items as emergency replacements to the 2324 West Stanley Sewer District budget. Budget Amendment 2024, or excuse me, 2024-54 and 2024-55 utilizing collected system development fee funds to cover the cost of $183,035 is attached. To account for unforeseen situations that could occur during installation, a 3% contingency allowance is recommended, resulting in a total budgetary cost of $188,526. Staff is recommending approval of budget amendments 2024-54 and 2024-55, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dwayne. Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Wingo?
Yes, sir.
Some of this stuff, will it reduce the original amount approved? Is some of this stuff we already?
Yes. I mean, we would have had to include it in our planned facility because we're going to be doing a significant upgrade to the McCoy Creek pump station. What we're hoping to do is create a truly redundant situation where we can operate half the pumps at one time during normal flows, and if necessary, we can get into both wet wells. There is additional repairs that are needed, which we're going to defer those until the upcoming project. I've got leaky check valves in there now, but we felt like they'll last long enough for us to get to a point where they can be included. But this here is just, if we, if this MCC goes bad, we'll have to rent a very expensive pump, generally probably two of them, and that runs about $4,000 a month, plus temporary telemetry controls being set up, plus we have to answer to the state, you know, why we allow this to happen. So it's one of these things that it's just, whether we can spend it now or spend it later, it's probably best to spend it now based on what we're getting from our equipment suppliers and instrumentation people.
How quick could they implement?
Unfortunately, that MCC is a complicated piece of equipment. It's probably going to take about 26 weeks, is what we've been told.
What about raising the, where the water's coming in at that part of it?
Are you talking about the vertical turbine pump at the plant?
Well, where the water's coming in, where we have excessive rains. Where the water's coming in, I think, where you mentioned, where there's excessive rain and outside waters.
That's an issue that we need to have discussions with our partners. They control the collection system. There is some contractual obligations on their part to try to mitigate inflow and infiltration, which we may need to revisit that, but that's something I would probably like to discuss one-on-one if we can with that issue.
Any other questions? I have one for you, Dwayne. What's the life expected of these pumps? I mean, these parts?
Well, hopefully with the good ventilation that we'll be putting in there, and plus we've also, as you're aware, introduced the hydrogen sulfide reduction chemical equipment, which seems to be doing its job for the most part. I anticipate 30 to 20, you know, somewhere between 20 to 30 years is a normal life cycle. I mean, obviously, it's hard to predict electromechanical stuff, but on average, I would hopefully 20 to 30 years. With the new station upgrade in 2026, what this station, we're going to keep what's there, but it's probably going to primarily be fulfilling a backup role to the new pumps that we're putting in, which will be modern, and this will be for during periods when it exceeds the flow level of the new pumps we're putting in. This will take over at that point or helps supplement the flows that we're going to get down through there during heavy I and I events.
With the MCC panel, there was an arc that I guess knocked it.
Yes.
Inoperable.
Yes.
Is it back online?
Yes, sir. Gopher Utilities does a remarkable job getting the patch, but his opinion is we have about a year. I mean, that's his professional opinion, and that's where I'm a little bit concerned about something going out again. This recent rain event we had over the holidays, it managed to pull through. We did do some further reprogramming of the PLCs down there, but, you know, it's getting worse and worse as, you know, we get into the rainy season.
Do we know what caused the arc?
Probably, according to him, it was deterioration of the breaker and of the MCC, just the electrical components have kind of, there's nuts and bolts in there, and when they're not fastened properly, I'm not an electrician, but from, that's what I surmise.
How many months are we moving this up to replace these items?
How many, how, well.
Yeah, how?
From September 26th, we'll have this in probably about two years. From completion date of September 2026, we'll have it done around June of 2024.
So we're saying that to do it six months, but we're moving it up. If it were done today, about two years?
We're moving up two years. Yes, sir.
So 18 months, okay. Any other questions?
I was just going to ask you, Mr. Chairman. 26-week delay, there's only like, what, $10,000 difference in the next bid?
They're all going to be the same. I mean, it's just.
The time limit's going to be the same on all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing no other questions, what would the board like to do?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment 2024-54 and budget amendment 2024-55. Move forward with the process.
Commissioner King made the motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would second that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Eifert, first and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The next item, item number three, is Martha Ingo, ZA 23-12, Harmony Road. Presenter is Bob Rimsburg, Planning Director.
Good evening, Board. Good to see you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Give me just a second, and let me get up and called up here. Is that it?
Yeah.
All right. So yes, this case comes back before you. As you know, we considered it a couple of months ago and then decided to maybe take it back to the planning boards for their review, and so they have looked at it, and Ms. Ingo kind of modified the request, and basically the modification is instead of being RA, residential agricultural, to consider this as R40, whereas the original request was R20. We looked at several different options of what we could do here. Because she wanted to create three lots, the lots are close to 60,000 square feet in size, we either had to, based on what she was wanting to do on the property, we either had to come back as R40 or to do it as a conditional zoning somehow. And without some of the things in place, we thought R40 was the simpler way to go in the recommendation. So that's why we brought this back before the planning board as a request for R40. R40 does, as says on this screen, lots would have to be at least 40,000 square feet. Again, she's proposing close to 60,000 square feet for those three parcels. We know already from our previous, being before you, it's 30-foot wide right of way. The new lots will be approximately 180 feet deep. There's well and septic in that area. We know already from our previous, being before you, it's 30 foot wide right away. The new lots will be approximately 180 feet deep. There's well and septic in that area. No public utilities that way. Of course, very low traffic on Harmony Road and along Swearingen Road and so on. In that territory, it's located, it is located in a rural preservation area. And of course, it is zone RA, which does require the minimum lot size to be three acres. As Ms. Ingo will tell you, she doesn't have significant immediate family in order to sell or transfer this to any immediate family members. No soil evaluation has been done on this at this point. And the planning board, after their meeting, did end up recommending denying the request by vote of five to two. Here's the property in question. You can see the eight lots on the north side of Harmony Road. We talked about that. Those were done back in the day when 20,000 square foot minimum lot sizes were okay in the RA zoning district. And of course, this is, she owned that side of the road as well as this other side. It was not subdivided at that time and still has not been. So it's one, about 4.2 acre tract. And here's kind of the proposal, but we don't know exactly where those magical lot lines would be. But basically, there's a drainage ditch sort of there between what would be on here, lots two and lot three. So you can see how this would kind of square up with three different lots on it. But some of that, and as we always advise folks, you don't draw your lot lines firmly until such time as you've done your soil evaluation, because you don't want the septic system to be on your neighbor's property. So ideally, you get that done before you get the survey to actually create the lots. And again, the whole area down there is, of course, RA for the most part. You have to get all the way back up toward US 52 and Porter Road to find some neighborhood business. But everything else is the light green color that we see for residential agricultural zoning. And then, of course, this is all, everything in that area is in the rural preservation. And I believe that's the only slides. Yeah, we'll talk about text amendments later on. So that gives you kind of an idea of what's been proposed. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions above? Don't see any, Bob.
All right, thank you.
No, we need to have a legislative hearing. I'll declare the hearing open. And anyone that would like to speak for, please come forward. State your name, tell us where you live, and tell us why you're for it.
Well, I'm Martha, and I want to thank you commissioners for realizing what I stand for. I'm honest in all my dealings with others. I was brought up as a farm girl and taught how values and to treat other people like you'd like to be treated. So I still do that. I appreciate your putting yourself in my place and consider how I feel. I feel I'm being discriminated because of my age. And I don't have any children. And they brought that up at this only meeting. Do you have any children? I said, no. Do you have any grandchildren? I said, no. But I have a lot of nieces and nephews that, they help me now, and they'll help me in the future. Jody Dennis don't want the land. He's a nice feller. He's my neighbor. He's one of my neighbors close. And if he wanted, he has good reason not to want it. And he said, and we got along good all our life. And he's a big farmer down there. He don't want it if I want it. I know that. He's been asked, and he said, no, he didn't want it if I wanted it. And I helped him have the last five acres that he got on the opposite side of my land. Because I was offered it for $10,000. I told him, no, let Jody have it. And Jody's been always good to me, and you don't see him up here fussing. Gina.
Okay. I'm Gina Smith, and I live in Aquadale on Bethlehem Church Road, and I'm Martha's sister-in-law. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, we want to thank you for your patience, time, and diligence. And we're working with Ms. Ingo with this issue that is very important to her. And I want to thank you again for all you do for the citizens of Stanley County. And Mr. Rimsburg and Bailey, we want to thank you also for your time and effort in the second rezoning request in regards to the 4.2 acres in Porter. The last being a request for zoning of R40. As you are aware, the request for the R40 rezoning at the last zoning board meeting was voted down with two people in favor of Ms. Ingo's rezoning request. And I'm not going to repeat all that's been said because y'all have heard it several times. The zoning board has heard it several times. And I believe you are all aware of why Ms. Ingo feels that she needs and wants the rezoning request. And the two neighbors that have been at the meetings with their objections. But I would just want to say, part of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners' mission statement includes promote health and well-being. And when you click on the enterprise goal results on your website, it lists one of the strategic goals, results that includes to ensure public safety, health and wellness, and one of the measures is community health index outcomes. And I wasn't sure what that exactly entailed. So I went to the county health rankings of road maps for Stanley County for 2023. And one of the outcomes measured is under quality of life. It's listed quality of life, and one of the outcomes measured is poor mental health days. And residents of Stanley County adults reported that their mental health was not as, not good on more days when measuring on the same outcomes as North Carolina and the United States. What I'm saying in a roundabout way is, this is called Ms. Ingo Martha, but stress, worry, and anxiety. And that's affected her mental health and quality of life. She already deals daily with depression about the death of her two daughters, and the zoning issue has added to her daily struggles. I know you all do the very best that you can do to promote health and well-being and ensure public safety.
Gina, you've got 30 seconds.
Okay, I'm almost done. Ensure public safety, health, and wellness as reflected in your mission statement and strategic goals results. And in closing, I would like to respectfully ask you to consider overriding the zoning board's denial of R40 zoning request for Ms. Ingo's property. It would align with your mission statement and your strategic goals. And in our minds, in the minds of other people we talk with, we just think it's the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak for this zoning change? Don't see anyone. I ask that if you would like to come forward and speak against this zoning, to please come up, state your name and your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
My name is Charlotte, and I have the adjoining property. My property is in this area. The houses, what we're worried about is the septic and the water. The water level, the table is low. She has wells that are 300 feet deep. Ours are only 200. That means that we have two houses on that property. We have to dig two new wells in order to meet with her goals. And if she goes 300 feet deep again, and then adds three more septic tanks to our well water and the septic and stuff, these trees right here do not exist. All of these trees right here on her property have been taken down. And all of this ditch line right here has been dug so much deeper. So when her, all of their water is now in our yard. I mean, it's, it's not as bad this past time as it was the time before it rained. But the water table is low. I have muddy water in my washing machine sometimes. You pull, take a shower, by the time you're done, it's kind of cloudy. So we're just, for you not to pass this, you already said that you need to have five acres for one house, you know, for the rural, and let it be agricultural. That's why we moved there. We didn't move there to have tons of houses built on top of us. That's why we're so far out of town. Just please consider all that she's wanted to add to that little bit of property and us being downhill. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis, would you like to speak?
My name's Louis Berger. I live on the adjoining property. For a long time, my parents lived at the house. They had, they bought the house in 83. The original well went dry. They put a new well in. And I recently moved there in '07 when I retired. Moved back and I just lived with my parents. We've noticed water problems with the well. But across the street, they put a trailer park in. They also put another monster trailer park not too far over. The area is deemed, preservation is not. There's a reason for that. The reason you guys went ahead and deemed that in the first place was to preserve it as a rural area for farming. This amendment that she wants to redo the zoning is going to change it from residential. Yes, she can put a house in there if that. But the way it's zoned right now, properly and through the authority of everyone in the neighborhood, and you guys as the commissioner, it's been done as residential farming. Not residential farming, for farming and not residential. I'm afraid that once you guys let this go through with one plot is residential, everything in the area will immediately start going in. You'll have subcontractors coming in wanting to put in all kinds of housing. You can see Albemarle's already filling up with a lot of housing. But remember, for every house that you put in there with a well, it's sucking the water out of the ground. Every house has to have a septic tank. And guess what? That stuff goes in the ground. Where does it end up? Because the water is underneath the ground, ends up in your water eventually. Yes, it might be a long time before it happens, but it's going to happen. There's no sewers in there. There's no water coming from Albemarle. We're on our own for water and sewer. And I don't see, in my best interest or the best interest of anyone who lives in the area, to keep adding more and more housing in there and more septic tanks. It doesn't make sense to me. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Curley. Thank you, Board, for letting me speak. I'm about like him as far as he said pretty much what I just want to say. I'm concerned about the water table around there. I do have a farm right across Swearingen Road from the land. I have to water my animals and all. Trailer parks is on one side. Across from me on the other side is another trailer park down there across from him in that house. If she wants to just build a house there, I'm fine with that. But as far as building a bunch of houses, I just, I'm like him about the water. I think we have trouble. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against this zoning request? Don't see anyone, anyone that would like to speak for. You're going to come up and speak again.
Yes, sir, I do. I live in the Johnny Davis Development, and everybody has a well and a septic tank. And we are all closer together than my property down there would be close to anybody. And I don't know how many houses is in my area, but it's about at least 10 or 20, at least that many. And ours all have our own water. I have a well 200 feet deep where I live. Everybody else has wells. And very few people have city water down there, even though you can get it. And I do have city water and a well for my garden, too. So I have five houses that all their water runs on my property in my front yard. Five houses right where I live. And the pipe that takes the water across the road is only an 18-inch pipe. And I thank you for thinking about where I live and what's going on where I live. And I don't complain, and my neighbors don't complain. And my three houses that I'm requesting would not be no nearer to them houses than where I live now. I'm just below the city limits in the Johnny Davis Development. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ingo. Anyone else?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am. If you would, come up.
Yes, sir.
So we'll have the mic.
If you look at lot three, on lot three where she's intending on putting that house, I've got a building that's four inches off the property line that was built before she purchased that. And then on lot three, my house, this house right here, is her trees that are planted on the property line are on my house.
Tell us, if you would, which?
Okay, my house is this house right here.
Okay.
Oh, what did I do? My house is right here. There, that house is, I don't know, four feet, maybe six feet off the property. My carport and her trees are only four feet apart. You know, she's saying that this is not on top of us. Well, here where my brother's house is at, there's his house. That's not, but a few feet away from that either. But they're up here, I'm down here. Everything they do comes down to my yard. So she's trying to say, they might have a deeper well where she's at, a deeper water table, but where we're at, it's not that deep. I mean, we've tried to look into it, but it costs thousands and thousands of dollars for them to tell us how deep the water is and to look at the water table. Unless you can tell me where to go look. I was just curious.
I don't know anything about water tables.
My house is right on top of that property line.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, and I'll try to keep this brief. With all due respect to Mr. Matt Berger and Mr. Curley, in regards to the trees, I don't see where that has anything to do with rezoning. But Ms. Ingo has somebody that's going to take the trees down tomorrow. And we've talked about the water table before. And since the summer, until recently when we've had this rain, the water tables have been low due to the drought. And so I understand their concerns. But before this was all brought to our attention and we came to your attention, there were no complaints about the water table to Ms. Ingo or to, from any renters about water table issues or septic tank issues. And there not been any complaints from the neighbors from water table issues or septic table issues. But Ms. Ingo is going to satisfy Ms. Berger's complaint of the trees being over on her property line, which she's had it surveyed twice. And it's not been found to be on the property line. But if the limbs are hanging over on her property, it's coming down tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a comment.
I'm, so sometimes when you rush through things, I kinda think we rushed through the whole thing about, about the zoning change. You know, when we did it, we knew there were gonna be some things that would fall through the cracks. And this may be one of those cases because it's not like, you know, I know you, I know, I know some people are concerned about developers coming in and redoing something and changing the farmland into these developments. This is a situation where it's almost, to me, it's almost like something should be grandfathered in because you had the roads built and everything else, and you originally, I forget where you were, you were gonna put more houses in, and you've compromised down to three homes, and originally was it five or eight you wanted to put in there, or four? Originally, but, but, um, so I just wanna say, I don't think this would set a precedent if we make a change, because this is, like I said, this is a good argument because it was, it's a grandfathered-in situation. Where roads are built and she already owned the property and stuff, and her, really, her penalty is not having children to pass it on to. Because if she had children, I believe, it'd be okay. Is that correct, Bob? It's just sixty thousand square foot lots, but anyway, that's my comment.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Barbie.
I'd like to bring up, it's not just children, it's a family, and you do have nieces and nephews that you could leave the land to. So it's not just that. Plus, I had spoke with you about two and a half weeks before we voted on this plan, and you were gonna go down and see Bob about getting grandfathered at that time. And I don't know why that didn't happen or why it fell through the cracks, but this will definitely set a precedent. If we back up in the two and a half years that we've spent trying to develop a land use plan, it'll be thrown out the window if we approve this now.
Other comments?
I agree with Commissioner Barbie, and if I may, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the MAP amendment, ZA twenty-three dash twelve, to rezone a four-point-two acre parcel on Harmony Road from RA Residential Agricultural to R forty Residential. This parcel is located in a rural preservation area, and only low-density residential development such as a family subdivision or three-acre minimum lot size should be permitted in this neighborhood.
Commissioner Crump, that is to deny the request?
Yes, sir.
You heard the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, Vice Chairman Barbie, second. Any other discussion? Like to ask if you would raise your right hand, if you're in agreement to deny this at this time. Okay. Six, opposed, Commissioner Shuto. Okay, motion to deny this zoning request passes six to one.
Excuse me, before we go on, can I ask a question of, for clarification on another issue to Mr. Rensberg while he's here? Okay, give you, I just wanna clarify my memory. Mr. Honeycutt was here in the, in the public comments section? And he was talking about he wants to go in and fix them and do all the remodeling and stuff like that. If I'm not mistaken, please be corrected, those houses were condemned, and there's no way there's any chance for him to get those back open again.
That, that is.
And the only reason we extended it was to give the people who live there a chance to find other housing over the holidays and stuff like that. So my concern is, I hope some of the people hadn't found a new place to live, and he went ahead and rented them to somebody else. What prevents, what prevents that from happening? Because he did that to that other couple.
Right. And I, well, it's hard to prevent that from happening because obviously we're not standing there every day and see what's happening. But the last bit that I, and I'm sorry, Mr. Swearingen didn't hear because he could fill us in directly on this. Last I heard, there were still two families occupying two of the, two of the mobile homes there. That was the last word I had. I do not know that that was prior to Christmas, so I don't know the latest on that, but obviously, if, if they're still there when we get to January thirty-first, we'll have to file, file for eviction and, and go through the process, and they'll have thirty days from that point to, to leave. And that, and then, you know, in that, while that's going on, we'll be seeking bids and what have you to, for demolition.
Just if, I was wondering if maybe Tim can go out there and just make sure that he hasn't put anyone else in those.
I can.
Mobile.
He'll be at work at eight-thirty in the morning. We'll, we'll see if he can head out that way.
Thank you.
Spoke with him recently, and I think he said there was only one.
Good, okay.
Trailer that was occupied.
Good. I hope.
But it'd be nice to verify.
Right. We could, we certainly, again, he has, I know he hasn't been out there since the holidays, so, obviously. So it'll be interesting to, to see. Hopefully, that has taken place, and, and maybe there are none occupied now. I certainly hope so.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number four, ZA twenty-three dash ten, text amendment, definition of substantial expenditures. Presenter is Ms. Bailey Klein.
Hello, good evening.
You changed your last name?
I did, I did, a couple months ago. Couple months ago. Alrighty, so. Let me get to the right slide. Okay. So the next item we have before you is ZA twenty-three dash ten. This is a text amendment to define substantial expenditure in both the zoning and subdivision ordinances. And this is something that we, previously I presented to you all, and it was sent back to the planning board for further review and some recommendations that you all had made. So the planning board reconsidered the proposed amendment to define substantial expenditure during their meeting on December eleventh. Staff had prepared language which suggested increasing the percentage of expenditure to be considered substantial, and added language which established the length of time prior to the expiration of a common law vested right. After hearing the commissioner's concerns and suggestion of thirty percent for substantial expenditure, and considering the added language, the planning board adjusted, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. After hearing the commissioner's concerns and suggestions of thirty percent for substantial expenditure, and considering the added language, the planning board adjusted the percentage recommended back to the commissioners to twenty percent, and set the term for common law vested rights at four years. The planning board discussed the correct percentage, knowing that one case law had generally set a very low standard for what is considered to be substantial. According to the school of government, common law vested rights may last for a long time. The planning board determined that four years should be sufficient to at least begin work on a project. The planning board unanimously recommended adopting the revised language to establish twenty percent as a substantial expenditure and four years as the length of time for a common law vested right. Let's see. So let me just move on to this next one, so it just lays it out. So this is what the updated language would consist of with the added recommendations. So it says, "A common law vested right is established if the substantial beginning of construction in which the owner slash developer would suffer undue losses if required to comply with any new requirements created after an application for property improvement has been accepted." "To establish a common law vested right, expenditures shall be twenty percent or more of the total estimated cost of the project as permitted. Expenditures of time, labor, and materials, as well as expenditures of money or actual construction, may be considered in establishing a common law vested right. A common law vested right shall continue unless the holders of the vested right do not exercise reasonable due diligence in pursuing those rights for a period of four years or more." And in the memo that you all got, there was some additional language as far as what is in case law and what is in the land use law book. But other than that, I'm gonna refer to Bob because I know that there was some comments made earlier, if you have any additional comments you would like to add to this.
Gentlemen and, Ms. Crump, the, we've had some discussion back and forth with staff and Attorney Befur and trying to figure out where we should go with this. A little bit of discussion about, of course, the whole issues of common law vested rights versus site-specific vested rights, and it's, it's an extremely complicated issue between statutory limitations, which very clearly says, especially for site-specific vested rights, gotta be two years, or at least, excuse me, at least two years, but generally no more than five. So that's, that's, that's in the statutes, but that's statutory vested rights, so, or, or site-specific vested rights. So this takes us to the common law vested rights language. So in, in our kind of discussions, what we think would be wise, since this has been an advertised public hearing, legislative hearing, is for you to go ahead and hold a public hearing and then, or open the public hearing, but not close it. Leave it open and table this until the next meeting or at least a point in the future, which gives staff a little bit more time to come back and review this a bit more, especially those lovely definitions between common law versus site-specific vested rights. So it says, "It's an extremely complicated issue, and we're jumping into something that generally is case law and trying to establish it into some sort of written ordinance." And so it's kind of a touchy area to be in, because a lot of this gets established. Again, I like part of the language of this, as you say, if, you know, if, if there's substantial construction beginning and so on, but, but it continue, you know, vested right basically continues as long as work is going on. Now, the question is, what is work, you know, and how much is going on, but that's, some of that almost has to be subjective. And that's where it gets kinda complicated, as, as we try to figure this out. But I don't know, Ms. Befur, you may wanna comment on this further, but, but that's, I hope I presented that correctly.
Yes, Mr. Rensberg. I would just say that it would be probably beneficial for us to have some additional time to do some additional research into the differences between site-specific vested rights versus common law vested rights. And I think if you all wanted to hold, go ahead and open the hearing and hold it open to the next meeting or the first meeting in February, I think that would give us sufficient time to make sure we have the wording ironed out as best as possible as far as common law versus the site-specific vested rights.
Then, just if I may, that would also give you time to have a conversation about what that percentage should look like, or, you know, whether that's twenty percent, thirty percent, whatever, so.
First meeting in February is February fifth, I believe.
Or, I mean, we, we likely can get it done by the sixteenth meeting, two weeks from now. So that's your next meeting.
Let's play it safe and go to February fifth.
That's fine.
You wanna make a motion to table?
Well, if you, if you don't mind.
I'm gonna leave it open.
Yeah, leave the public hearing open.
Yeah, anybody, anybody here to speak for this change or against this change? Don't see anyone. What's the pleasure aboard?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Bob, a question real quick. Bob, so this would pertain to any new subdivision that comes before you tomorrow, correct? Or would they fall under?
It's, it's, I guess I'd say we're not, we're not unprotected now, because common law vested rights and, and and site-specific vested rights exist, and there's language in our ordinance that addresses much of this. But, but there was some concern raised last year that, you know, we need to beef this up a little bit, and, and that's kind of where this all comes from. But we're not, we're not wide open or something like that because of not taking action at this point.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair.
Bob, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you something before you get going.
No problem. I needed to get my steps in today.
What I'm concerned about is the language, and we're talking about the time period plus the percentage. I thought we were pretty much all had agreement with thirty-three percent when it left here last time. But my other problem is, is when they came in, when they come in and they get a plot approved, they got two years to do something, right?
In general, yeah, yes. Once, once they've established, under, under site-specific, get it right, then you have pretty much two years to, to do that. Now, again, it, it gets a little squirrely because, again, if they're proceeding with, again, you've got two different vested rights, so, you know, the, the basic idea is to be fair to the developer, and it could be a subdivision that we're talking about, it could be a, a commercial project, it could be, you know, any development, any project that's involved here. And as you know, sometimes they go south. Soon as they get approved, suddenly the financial wizards mess up or something. Who knows? And sometimes these things get drawn out. So the basic, I like the, the school of government, one of Mr. Owen's lines says, you know, the whole goal of vested rights, period, is about fairness. You know, again, since, we want our laws to be observed and in place, and of course, if you make a change to that law, that's great, but if someone's already made an expenditure or some idea, you know, beyond just an idea, but, but they're actually doing something or they've gotten, and they really have to have an approval already in place, then they're, there's, you know, they got that approval, they did it in good faith, thinking that this was the law. And then we, as staff and you as a board, change that law, well, you know, in fairness, shouldn't they have the right to continue and finish that development the way they had done it under the law that was in place at that time? So that's kind of the, the gist of this whole vested rights thing is.
I understand that, but.
Sure, good.
Technically, the way I look at this is, is that the developer is just trying to get under old ordinances instead of having to abide by the new ordinances, which can be unfair to the public that's around them. And so that's the reason I'd like to see a, a one-time extension, if you're gonna do an extension. And I think most times, if you got two years initially, another year should be a plenty to take care of any update. And then if, if they can't get it done in three years, then they need to come back before you again and reply again.
Yeah, and that, and that more or less is the language in our ordinance, that, you know, as far as substant, keep getting it wrong. Far as the site-specific vested rights, you've got two years. And if you don't get it and you haven't done anything in those two years, then, you know, the clock's been ticking at that time, you've not proceeded, then you gotta come back to the planning board with a new plan. Or the same, you come back with the same plan, but it's got, whatever plan it is, it's gotta fit the zoning ordinance at that time, not the zoning ordinance two years before.
Then I guess where I'm getting confused is, is why do we need to give them more than two years after they can't do it in two years? They need to come back before you again anyway.
The question partly becomes, have they done something, you know, have, if, if they've done some work, some substantial expenditures, then that may be establishing a common law vested right, not just this vested right, this site-specific. I'm looking at Scott, and he's nodding his head because he deals with this as well, with the city locusts, so I think, I think I'm correct in saying that, and, okay. Thank, thank for the confirmation, Scott.
Just vice chairman Barbie's concern and question, I think that's where Jenny and I there are people talking and what her comments are. The goal here is to pause so that we can accomplish what you're trying to do, which is to ensure that our site-specific language, the general statute regarding, around site-specific, and whatever common law is, and whether that even exists, all match up and are aligned in your ordinance. And so there isn't this ambiguity as, do they get an extension, they get, not get an extension. Really what we're talking about is they have a site-specific timeframe, whether that be two years or whatever years you deem appropriate or our board deems appropriate, and that's the timeframe. And if they don't do that, and they don't meet a certain percentage or whatever you determine in terms of what that due diligence is, then it has to come back before you to be reconsidered. And that's what we're trying to do here. So that's why we're asking you to pause it, so that we can do our legal due diligence to make sure the language is correct, so that everything's aligned, so that we don't have, we don't have contradicting pieces within your ordinance.
Right. Yeah. Should I ask for a pause or a table? Right.
And leave the hearing open.
I'll make a motion that we table this until we get some further information on it.
Second. Do we have a date? Table it until when?
Table it till.
Next meeting, February the 5th, the first meeting in February?
You rather need, if you need it February, I'd make it February.
I don't think.
I think either day would work, Mr. Chairman, whether you want to do the next January day or the first day, it depends.
Okay. January the 16th, is that correct?
Yeah, because Martin Luther, we have Martin Luther King holiday on that Monday, so it's the 16th.
Okay, table it till our next meeting, January.
Okay. Is the motion to table it to the 16th of January, do we have a second? Second. Okay, Commissioner Hatley, second to the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Okay, the next item. We're getting all kinds of stuff out of the planning and zoning.
We had a bunch this month.
ZA 23-11 text amendment section 1405, multiple use on a lot. Mr. Bob Rimsburg.
Well, good evening again, and we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. So, again, this was kind of gone back and forth a little bit. So, it's, Dr. Ekman sent to you in a memo, that we've rewritten the section a little bit, and changed it again, at kind of your request, and that was the idea of now allowing just one home on a lot, basically, in the residential zoning districts throughout the county. So, we, you know, the old language allowed a mobile home in the RA district to be placed on any lot with either a site-built home or a mobile home, as long as that lot was two acres or larger. But with the three-acre rule and information that we put forth, that seemed kind of out of place, and needed to potentially be considered to adjust. So that's kind of where we've gone back and forth. There are always exceptions to this, in a way, and it might be worth pointing that out in the second paragraph here on the screen. It talks about revised language would only allow one home, where permitted per parcel with the following exceptions: a bona fide farm, as provided under section 302 of the ordinance; duplex residents, which are in section 701; or accessory dwelling units under section 421; or an approved manufactured home park; or a multifamily project, which we don't have any multifamily projects going on. But it does change the language a bit, this kind of fine print here, but it adds a paragraph to the beginning of section 405, changes the title to structures on a lot of record, and then eliminates the language that's currently in section 405.3, which is the whole language about creating, allowing a second unit, a manufactured home, on a lot. And this would, since manufactured homes are only allowed in the RA district, it would only be in the RA district, that that was applicable. So, that, this language. I'll be glad to answer any questions about this. I think it's fairly straightforward now. It would only allow, with those exceptions, a one-site-built home, modular home, or manufactured home, where they're allowed, on a lot of record. Otherwise, you have to divide the lot.
Three-acre lot.
If it's in the RA district that's in rural preservation, yeah, three-acre lot, or if it's family subdivision, 60,000 square foot lot, if it's R40, it's a 40,000 square foot and so on.
Any questions of Mr. Rimsburg? Don't see any. So I'll declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone to come forward to speak for or against this zoning change? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to deny text amendment ZA 23-10, which would allow a second.
Well, we're on 23-11. One lot, yeah. One lot per house. One house per lot. ZA 23-10, we tabled it.
It does look like the suggested language, that we said, we put 10 on there, I think, instead of 11. Said, should say, suggested language for ZA 23-11, text amendment section 405, multiple homes on a lot.
Read it, except it's 23-11.
I'll make a motion to deny the text amendment, which would not allow a second primary single-family home on a lot. This amendment would eliminate some houses, flexibility for owners of lots of two acres or more in the RA zone.
So you're, that is.
So it would only have one house per three acre.
If you deny it, you're making a motion to deny that text amendment, which would not allow a second primary residence. So if you only want one house per lot, then you would want to approve the motion to approve it.
Oh, okay, so I got that. I can make a motion to approve text amendment, I guess it's ZA 1311, to allow a one primary single-family home on a lot, which would help prevent increased residential density and rural preservation there, which is a goal of the land.
Okay, we have a motion to approve ZA 23-11.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Eifert, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Okay. Let me get caught up here.
I apologize for getting, we face the same thing y'all do when we're juggling so many different cases, sometimes, getting those numbers.
Bob, I believe you're still up.
I am, I probably should have let Bailey come for this.
ZA 23-13.
Okay. So, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about this in the last couple of hours, actually, but text amendment, this came up at the planning board meeting, some discussion about, okay, well, if we're gonna do some of this, you know, where do ADUs, accessory dwelling units, fall into this? And how do we, you know, do we change anything about that? We don't have to change anything about that necessarily, but the current language says that you can only, you can have an accessory dwelling unit of 800 square feet, or 50% of the heated square footage of a primary dwelling, whichever is less. So if you've got a 3,000 square foot house, your accessory dwelling unit can be 800 square feet. If you've got a 1,200 square foot house, you can have 600 square feet, because you're gonna do 50% of the heated floor space of that. So the reason for keeping it small, of course, is it's an accessory dwelling unit, it's not supposed to be a second house on the property. But the planning board kind of thinking about that, well, if you have someone that has a really large house, and they want a guest house, or apartment, or whatever, you know, some, maybe, and we do run into this from time to time, as staff, where we have people coming in and say, I want to build a thousand square foot house for my in-laws, or 1,200 square foot house, something like that. Now, obviously, if they've got the land, they can subdivide the property and do that. They could build a 1,200 square foot addition to their house. You might be an accessory dwelling unit, but it's really hard to tell the difference between accessory dwelling unit and an addition to a house. You know, what's the difference? Not much. We do have some limits, I don't have that in front of me, but, or I do, yeah, I do have it in front of me. You know, currently, you know, they've got to share up the same address, use the same mailbox, they're supposed to have the same utilities, they, let's see, can have no more than two bedrooms, and ideally, they, the design style of the ADU is similar to the design style of the house. Okay? That's some of the requirements in the designs, standards, and so on. So that's, you know, if you look at the, in fact, I guess I've got that right here, the language proposed here, you know, eliminates the 800 square feet rule, and just sticks with 50% of the gross floor area of the principal building. So whether it's a 1,200 square foot house, or a 3,000 square foot house, would be limited to 1,500 square foot ADU. So that was just, the planning board thought that was a reasonable idea to add this, or subtract some of this language and create it like this. And let's see, let me look at my list here, if there's anything else I need to point out. Yeah, it can't be with a duplex or multifamily dwelling, has to be the same owner, of course, as the primary residence, of course, that's pretty difficult to do if it was on the same parcel, and similar architectural style. So, and can't look like a multifamily structure, so two front doors is an example. So that kind of gives you an idea, correct? But that's, it's a recommendation, it, you know, does it make sense? In some ways, it does, because, again, we get this question from time to time, from folks wanting to build a larger one. It's not much of a way to grant a variance to that, even though it is a number in the ordinance, because one of the questions that has to be proven true in a variance is, is this a self-created hardship? And in this case, it almost always would be a self-created hardship, you know, kind of situation. But, you know, that would be a board of adjustment question, if they, you have a right to ask the question, but it'd be a little hard for them to approve something like this. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Vice Chairman Barbie?
Yeah, Bob, I know this sounds ridiculous, 50% of the heated floor space. If you've got a 4,000 square foot house, you could have a 2,000 square foot in-law set.
Right.
I raised four kids in a house with less than 1,500 square feet.
I understand. I raised two.
I think this is a little overbearing, and if nothing else, I think the 800 square foot's adequate, I'd just like to see it left like it was.
And I'm very flexible on this, so whatever the board chooses to, feel, the planning board just, they kept thinking about 800 square feet, and realizing that that might be too small. So that's kind of where that, that's where they came from.
Any other questions? Mr. Rimsburg? Any questions, Mr. Rimsburg?
Sounds good.
We need to decide what we're gonna do with ZA 23-13 text amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I do have one question, sir.
Go for it.
According to the design standard, you got scratched out, accessory dwelling shall have an area no more than 800 square feet, and under that, it says accessory dwelling shall not exceed 50%. Isn't that sort of contradictory? Am I just thinking it wrong? You said 800 square feet, but then the next line says, shall not exceed 50%.
Right, but I like the 800, and leave it at 800 and take the 50% off.
Well, okay, well, you could.
There was less.
You could, that's true. And again, I think because this was written fairly open, as far as the advertisement, you could probably change that, if you want to. Now, the planning board hasn't, you know, they discussed, they just thought this, but I see your point, Mr. Eifert, the, because, again, if you're dealing, if you're dealing with a thousand square foot house, 500 square foot accessory dwelling is pretty small. So it might be of some advantage to allow to be up to 800 square feet.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Do we want to move forward with this, or do we want to table it until next meeting? Or do we want to approve it, the way the planning board recommended? Yeah, have I not had the public hearing?
I know it's getting confusing.
I'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody want to speak for or against, please come forward, state your name, where you live, and your comments. I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll close the public hearing. Now, what would you all like to do?
Mr. Chair, where did, can I ask, where did the 800 square feet come from?
Mr. Rimsburg?
It's in the ordinance now. It has been, maybe, well.
Forever.
Whenever ADUs were added to the ordinance, and that's probably been 15, 20 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner Eifert.
Could we move to approve and take the language out? This would allow accessory dwellings to be no more than 50% of the size of the primary dwelling?
We better get counsel's input on that.
Yeah, make the motion to leave, leave the 800. Let's see, so I want to deny that.
Yeah, if you deny, if you deny the current thing, it would just leave it the same as it is today.
I'm not crazy about the 50% of a 3,000 square foot house being 1,500.
No, 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 it can't be more than 1,000. That's why both of them are listed. It's the lesser of the two.
Okay.
So if you, yeah, if you had a, if you had a very small house, you know, you're half of whatever that's worth.
Could you do, could you do something? Because like I said, if you have a 4,000 square foot house, and you want to put an 800 square foot house in, and then it says it could have a maximum of two bedrooms, I can't imagine two bedrooms in an 800 square foot house. If you had something, if you had more of a formula based on the size of the house, like perhaps if you had a 2,000 square foot house, you could have a 1,000 square foot dwelling, or something like that. Because sometimes we're trying to do this one size, it's all, you may to be specific, like you said, that 50%, if you kept the 50% in there, it messes it up if you have a thousand square foot house, you know, because of 500 square foot thing. So I'm just wondering if maybe we table this like the other ones, since we tabled the other one, just to kind of see if we can come up with a different formula or something, because if you got a 400, like I said, if you got a fourth, most of the, what's the size of most of the houses they're building right now, in average sizes?
Yeah, I don't, because I know the answer to that. Mr. Eifert might know better from City of Locust, but those are big balances for the most part.
1,500, 3,000 square feet, most of them.
Yeah, pretty common. We get, you know, I'd say county-wise, probably a little less than the 1,500, probably, but yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna make a motion, it may fail, but I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the text amendment and leave it at the 800 square foot, not to exceed 50% of the original homes' square footage.
I'll second that. Would you, would you read the, it's close to what you said.
I make a motion to deny the text amendment ZA 23-13 to remove the 800 square foot requirement and clarify setback rules. The 800 square foot minimum will keep any accessory dwellings small and avoid increased house, housing density.
Okay. The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hatley, second. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
And the reason I'm just gonna vote against this is because I would have liked to have the time. have liked to have the time to kind of see if we could tweak it a little more.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of this motion to be denied, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Aye. Five to two. Motion denied. Yep. Our next presenter is our county manager, Andy Lucas, on the school system capital planning and collaboration resolution.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before this evening for consideration is a, is a resolution, the commissioners have a work group, along with myself, that meets periodically with the school system facilities' planning committee. And there's been some discussion with that committee regarding, you know, funding, certainly lots of discussion about more funding, capital facilities. And so, I think, I mean, our, our work group wanted to put something together to, for the full board to consider, and for the school system to consider a resolution that looks at developing an RFP that does a comprehensive plan, that looks at a lot of different things, really an extensive review of their financial condition, you know, the configuration of our existing schools, what options are there, the, the capacity in our current schools, the, the condition of our schools currently, what the needs are, you know, if they're going to consolidate or, you know, and build new schools, what does the redistricting look like for those new schools? Just a lot of questions that would need to be answered in, in a more comprehensive way so that our board can make informed decisions. Because obviously, if a bond referendum comes before, a request comes before you, that's a, that's a significant request to put before the voters when you're looking at, you know, $130 million for a, for a high school. So, if you're talking about building two new high schools and an elementary school, you're looking at about $300 million or close to it in terms of capital expenditures. And the chances are that there's going to be a tax rate increase associated with 300 million, and, not chances are, there would, there would be a, a tax increase associated with that. And so, I, I think it's just a matter of doing due diligence. And so, what this resolution contemplates is that the commissioners would be willing to equitably share up to 50% of the cost of a comprehensive plan and collaborate on a request for proposals in an effort to solicit proposals from qualified and competent firms with a demonstrated ability to carry out and deliver a comprehensive planning process that's consistent with the scope that's in this resolution. And so, that's before you, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Hopefully, all the commissioners have had time to read this resolution. As County Manager Lucas said, I mean, there's a lot of things to be considered when you're talking about spending any kind of money like this would cost. And there's certain bullet points in there that, when we look at it, we need to be able to have the answers to, to these questions. And please, if you haven't read it, I hope you have, or if you have questions about it, please put them on the table and let's talk about them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think it's a very well-thought-out resolution. I think y'all have covered all the bases on that, so I applaud you for getting the ball rolling.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I agree with that. After reading this, I was, it excited me, you know? I used to be on the school board for four years, and I think one thing that, and it's across probably every state, that school boards and commissioners don't always seem to get along. And there's, and right here is evidence that we're willing to share. I mean, it's equitable, 50% of the cost of this. It shows that we're going to have skin in the game, and I, I hope that the school board will be excited about it as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other? Yes, sir, Commissioner Ashudo.
Then just, I appreciate Commissioners Barbie and Lawhan and County Manager Lucas working on this. We've been doing this for almost a year and a half, two years, and I think this will get the ball going. And it may slow down any plans they may have to redo what they want to do, but if you're going to spend that much money, you need to look at all options on the table and get all options. And the reason I like having somebody and hiring a consultant, because I know that, you know, we all got same goals, but they have a different way to do it. Their goal's been, they don't want to get it, they had not wanted to hire a consultant in the past because they feel they know what they need. And my thing is, when you make these decisions, you got to get rid of the local prejudices of people who, because their grandkids went here and all that stuff here. That, that gets into, I'd like to have, I think this is good because it'll have an impartial person come in and make decisions. Because I know from the past, you talk about redrawing any district line or changing kids' to schools or doing anything, there's just a lot of emotion involved. So, I hope we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? It's a pleasure, the board.
I make, I make the motion that we support this resolution and send it to the Board of Education.
Commissioner Ashudo made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Crump, second the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Thank you, County Manager Lucas. I believe you're still up.
Yes, sir. The next item is the 24-25 budget calendar, and we're actually at that time of the year where we're already considering the 24-25 budget. But before you this evening is just a proposed calendar. There are some TBD dates in there for joint meetings with the school board and the community college that we typically do in the March-April timeframe. And we've left those as sort of TBD, but other than that, this would set, sort of formalizes our, our calendar so we can give direction to staff and begin that process that really kicks off with your planning retreat in late February, and then by early March, our, our department heads are off and running on building their budget requests. And so, it would ask for you to, your consideration of adopting the 24-25 fiscal year budget calendar.
Any questions of County Manager Lucas? None? The board like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt or approve the attached budget calendar for 2024, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the calendar, is there a second? Second. Commissioner Hatley, second motion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, oh. Okay, County Manager Lucas.
The next item is the reaffirmation of the, your code of ethics, per North Carolina General Statute, counties must reaffirm, or boards of commissioners must reaffirm this code of ethics every year, and that code of ethics is contained in your packet for consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hopefully, all the commissioners have read this either in the last few days or have read it and is familiar with it. We need to approve, let's see, yeah, need a motion to approve. Okay. Vice Chair Barbie, and second by Commissioner Ashudo. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, oh. County Manager Lucas.
One more, before you get to this consent agenda. This is the Livestock Arena Project Change Order Proposal Number Two. Our IT staff has been working closely with MCT and their engineers on identifying additional conduit needs for electrical service and data, as well as for the HVAC area room, for the IT network closet of this new facility. We've also identified some things in the project scope, like pole, pole, poles for, for lighting, and the high-velocity fans for inside the arena. These were things that were in the initial sort of scope of the project that were pulled out when we approved it, knowing that we'd have to come back to them. And we're hoping that we'd be able to do that within the contingency amount. And then there's just some other additional conduit items and electrical service upgrades just so that we can have concerts and other things at that venue. Those are all contained in there. I will say that Commissioner Hatley had some conversations with, I think, the grading contractor out there with the number six, the site lighting. There is an alternative that MCT has proposed, which would be solar lighting. And so, we would be able to do the, the four double-head and five single-head solar lights. And here, they gave a cost of, they, it adds, actually adds up to $92,500, but they put in there at $90,000. But, they've come back with the solar lights at $66,532. So, a savings of $23,468, plus, when you reduce that, it also reduces the overhead and profit percentage by $2,011, $2,112. And so, overall, the, this alternative by using the solar lighting, light poles, would actually save $25,580. And so, and the other thing with the solar lights, in this, you'll notice in this change order, they, there's a, there's a, there's a big star and asterisk, says rock excavation is not included, additional charges could be incurred. And I think that's where, what caught Commissioner Hatley's eye and had some conversations with the local grading contractor, because we don't know what that number is. So, is they, you know, that number's not in the change order. If you had to, you know, bury that conduit, by the time you do that, you may have, if you've got bad soil, you're going to have to put in new soil, plus you're going through a parking lot that's already been graded. And so, that, that cost also would not be incurred with the solar lights. You just, you just, you know, install them and then they're done, you don't have the electrical going to those. So, and obviously, you, you potentially save costs over time because you don't have an electrical bill. And so, really, what we're looking at is, if you, $194,006 total cost of this change order, and then when you net out what we have in contingency and their overhead and profit, it's the, instead of being a change order for $125,45701, it's $99,87689 if you do the solar poles versus the electrical poles. And we've got a grant of $250,000 that we received as part of this last year's budget from the state. And so, if you, if you approve this change order of roughly $100,000, you still have another $150,000 left that could be used for contingency. Because one of the other things that we didn't purchase in the initial scope of the contract was the metal bleachers. So, the, the bleachers are concrete in a, in a stadium seating, so people can sit on them as they are. But if you want to install metal bleachers, that would be an additional cost. And so, that's one of the things that we may look at once as we, as those, once those concrete bleachers are poured, we can get a, and then, somebody out there to give us a, give us some specs and some quotes on potentially adding metal bleachers to the, to the concrete area. And so, so even by approving this change order, you're still, by, by recognizing that $250,000 grant, you still, we're still going to be to the good $150,000 with the project that you still have sort of for contingency or other things that you may want to add. And so, I'll be happy to stop there and answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions? I do have a question about solar lighting. Do we know how good it is? I mean, is there any location within 100 miles that might have these same type lights?
According to our contractor, there is. The MCT, there was some, some commercial or church-type parking lots where they've used these. Commissioner Hatley may be able to speak to it, too. I think you, you're.
Well, the company's close to Rock Hill, South, right out of Charlotte.
Yeah, the, they're, it's Indian land, so they're actually going across the border in Lancaster.
It's a fairly local contractor that does this, and it's awesome website. I don't have my notes with me, but, I mean, it's, they're just as bright as a, you know, a 110 light. They're, I think it's three days of darkness, or, or they will work. It's got an app where you can dim them, brighten them, timers. I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive what they'll do. And, yeah, and it was a, was it a five-year warranty?
I believe so.
A five-year warranty on them, and, pretty impressive. I mean, nice poles.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're fairly, you know, attractive-looking poles, no, no diff, you know, no, no, certainly no, you know, just as attractive as the ones we have out in our existing parking lots. And so, you know, that's not going to be an issue from that perspective.
I think the battery life, and I didn't talk.
And I didn't bring the specs.
To this last guy, but, you know, roughly 10 years, so.
If the sun's not shining for three days.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive what they'll do. I mean, Doug at MCT was excited because he said that, I'd looked this up and gave it, gave it to him, and, and he kind of took it from there, but he said he's got multiple projects that this could be used on, yeah, because it's getting so expensive to run conduit and wire.
Any other comments, questions?
And again, that solar's an, an opportunity to potentially save cost. I mean, you can always go back to the original, you know, without that, and what's that? The total savings to go with the solar light poles is $25,580.
Excluding the rock clause, that we may use.
Yeah, and you probably would hit the rock clause, too. So, you're going to, you're saving at least $25,580 if you go with the solar light, light option.
It's a pleasure to board.
I make a motion to, yeah, shift the solar lighting for the arena parking lot.
And the rest of the?
And approve the change.
And approve the change over with the solar option. Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Ashudo, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, oh.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate Commissioner Hatley looking into that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hatley. Okay, I believe we're up to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
First, Commissioner Efer, second by Commissioner Ashudo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, oh. Closing comments. Commissioner Crump, do you have anything for us?
I would just say that this, last December, last month, we had a Health and Human Services Board meeting with some new faces. I believe seven people were sworn in, two had been there before, but were swearing in for a new term, and five new people. And we are meeting again on Thursday of this week. It's open to the public if anybody wants to come.
Thank you for that report. Commissioner Hatley?
I want to thank Peter and Bill and Mike for all y'all's work on this school board. So, thank y'all.
Okay. Vice Chairman Barbie?
I hope we're not going to go overboard too much on the arena, but keep it under calls, and I appreciate Commissioner Hatley for looking into it and saving us some money on those lights. And I just want to thank everybody else. Thank you.
Commissioner Efer?
No comments, sir.
Commissioner King?
I just want to thank Paul Wilkins for coming out and giving us some insight of what you guys have got going on. Roughly how many beds do you guys have? If you could answer that, or I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm just curious, and I didn't want to ask you in the public comment, but.
We currently have three, three men's houses, which are limited to five, excuse me, three men's houses, limited to five beds each home, one women's house, limited to five.
Are they currently at sta, I mean, full sta, I mean, full occupancy?
No, we are at full capacity. We were at full capacity till right about Christmas. And it's just a tough time, and we had a couple relapses and a couple go back home to family. So we do have a few beds open.
How does one reach out to you guys to see if you guys can help?
Yeah, so obviously we're open to volunteer help. And, you know, our website, my phone number, our personal phone number is on that website to reach me through.
If somebody has a family member they're trying to seek assistance, or?
Absolutely. Give us a call. So we, we are set up right now. We don't take anybody directly off the street. We only accept any individuals that have been through a 28-day minimum program. So Bridge Recovery's a 28-day program. We work well with them and several other facilities. And that's because we need to get them through a detox. We need to get them through about a good solid month of sobriety. Many, many individuals, they're not really even thinking straight for about three weeks. They're really not even sober.
It definitely requires a commitment from them for what you guys do, and I think that's a big key to success.
Well, and you know, that, that minimum requirement of 28 days, it does help to filter the ones that are serious about it, and they, they want to take that next step. So it's to our benefit, certainly.
Hearing the testimony tonight and the testimony at y'all's Christmas party, that just really, I mean, you guys are doing a great job. And I just want to thank you for what you're doing there. Keep up the great work.
Well, you know what? It's a lot of hard work, and you can talk about the sacrifice, but it's embarrassing in light of the blessing that comes.
Thank you for what you do and all the work you put into it, and your wife and everybody else. Thank you so much.
Well, again, thank you all for your support. Thank you.
That's pretty much all I have tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Shudo.
Just a couple of things real quick. I went down to the courthouse to see Charlie Johnson today. And man, that parking lot, that's a smooth move over there. A lot of cars in that parking lot, first of the, first of the month, too. So another side comment on it, I was up at Charlie's place, and I never really noticed the original windows in that courthouse. And I said, how they work, how are they doing? He said, the ones that have duct tape on them are pretty good. A lot of those are sealed with duct tape on those windows there. But that was kind of cool, just seeing that old architecture stuff there. Anyway, a couple of things, just want to share my goals for next year because I just want to let y'all know what I'm working on, so I don't, so things don't come as a surprise. Because sometimes I get ideas and they just get ideas and I move with them at the time. Couple of goals this year, I want to continue my goal of I try to visit all the municipalities meetings at least once a year. This year, every year, I don't, I don't do that. This year, I think I missed three of them, but I want to continue that goal of doing that. I want to have six workdays in different county departments, because that's always a good way to learn things. Something different, I want to have six tours of different departments with department managers. I think you and Patty had done that before, early on, and then you continued to do that. I think that's a pretty cool thing. And I'm going to create a quarterly newsletter on what I've, when I go around to, to share with the different municipalities on what's going on and with the staff members of the county staff. And then I'd like to, this year, work with the Friends of the Library, the Art Guild, the library staff, the library board, and the commissioners. And hopefully we can get a consensus and get a little bit of money to restore though that's the sculpture at the library. That's a significant piece of artwork that hopefully we could restore. Because we know it's not, it doesn't look like what it's supposed to look like. So hopefully we could get it with that. And then finally with the schools, thank y'all for support on that. I think we have to really start and getting some figures down and move forward on this to figure out what to do. There are so many, we've had discussions, so many different configurations and options that, that we can look at if we get, if we get the right information. And hope everyone has a very solid 2024.
Thank you. There has been some activity at the courthouse, especially in the clerk of courts area. There's doing, they're doing some updates that will keep those associates safer than they have been in the past. There's some doorways that are being taken out and a new flow for the way the traffic will be there at the clerk's office. I don't have anything else other than the fact, I hope everybody did have a Merry Christmas and starting out the New Year good. I know there's a lot of sickness out there, and I hope that people that are sick will get to feeling better and move forward in 2024. I need a motion that we adjourn.
Remove, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, second, multiple seconds, all in favor, aye. We're, we're adjourned.